Hey, we'll call the meeting to order at 10:01. Ms. Clary?
Dear Father, we are here together to think about our communities and service to our local taxpayers and people. This week I've been thinking about all of the people that have lost loved ones and looking for children and grandchildren and, you know, through natural disasters. Please, please put your hand on them and help them through all the facing natural disasters that are happening across the country. As we go forward, we know you're here, we thank you, in your name I'm in.
Wilson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. In the event we're called upon to evacuate the building, please move nearest to the nearest station.
Roll call, please.
Your hinky.
Here.
Mrs. Fedler.
Mr. Tall.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Fisher. Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Hahn.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Skelly.
Here.
Mr. Hogan. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Clary. Mr. Wang. Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Hey, before we start this freakish, I have a public statement to make. I know I ordinarily admonish you guys about dressing appropriate for the occasion and how seriously you take things and that your mode of dress is a form of communication and you communicate how seriously you take thing and you'll notice today I'm not wearing my suit. That's because depending on how long you guys blowviate, I gotta go get on a train and I'm not gonna wear a suit to New York City. So if you blowviate too long, I'm gonna get up and walk out and Cassidy's gonna take over. Okay, but that is, that is why you don't see me in a suit, you won't see me outside of a suit for a board meeting in the future. I apologize. Can we start the public hearing yet? Okay.
Notice of public hearing on Adirondack Community College tentative budget. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Washington will hold a public hearing in the Supervisors' Chambers, Washington County Municipal Center, Building B, 383 Broadway, Fort Ever, New York, on the 18th day of July 2025 at 10:05 a.m. for the purpose of hearing testimony in favor or opposed to the 2025-2026 Adirondack Community College Budget for the academic year beginning September 1, 2025. Yeah, I think we got 10:05.
Hey, call the public hearing to order. Community college budget at 10:05. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard from the public? Is there any public comment on the community college budget? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the matter of the public of the community college budget this public hearing? Having called for public comments three times and heard none, I declare this hearing closed at 10:06. And now, as long as we're talking about the community college, I'd like to introduce you to President, new President Anastasia Erz. She comes to us from Anadog County College where she was 14 years out there as Provost and several other important duties, I believe. And I'd like to have her come up and just introduce herself to you and let everybody get a look at her.
Thank you and good morning. And I'll say in advance that you have Supervisor Nolan to thank or not thank, as it were, for my presence here today. He chaired the search committee on behalf of the college, and I think he did a wonderful job. It was wonderful to meet him. Second thing I want to share with you about me before we get into the college and our work together is that I am the proud daughter of John C. Erz, who has spent 51 years as the supervisor of the town I grew up in. And I think there's a few of you in this room that would appreciate then a few of the things I've seen at the dinner table and on from there throughout all of my life. And a lot of the way I think about leadership was really developed in the work that he did and the work that I know all of you do in community, being responsive to the needs of constituents, being very attuned to the vitality and vibrancy of our local neighborhoods, having our focus on the things that real people need to make their lives better. And I was drawn to the community college space as my life's work because that's what we do in community college. We are greeting every learner, every person, and trying to help that individual find their, their best path to the thing that will really fulfill their lives and help their families. That work cannot be done without the partnership we have with all of you. And we remain at all times, and I will be at all times, at your disposal to talk about things that you'd like to see, things you're hearing. If, I always say that skeptics are often my, my best advocates in a lot of ways because you get us, you help us to become better. So if there are things that are concerning you at any point, I really want to hear from you, and I have business cards here so you can find me if you, if you need to do that. But mostly I'm, I have immense gratitude for this opportunity. It is something that I've spent a long lifetime growing in, in my work in collegiate life, and I feel that we are poised at SUNY Adirondack to do some additional amazing things for these communities, for this region. And so I appreciate your partnership and I look forward to a long, a long road ahead with all of you. Thank you.
Hey, in your package you'll find the condensed minutes for June 20th, 2025. I'll consider them accepted as mailed unless there's any additions or corrections. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll consider them accepted as mailed. Communications?
Communications, Senator Steck acknowledged received of our resolution number 183 urging the state of New York to promptly transfer state-ready inmates from county jails to state correctional facilities and fully reimburse counties for related costs. That's all I have for communications.
Any other communications? Seeing none, committee reports, audit committee.
Chairman, I'd like to move the audit committee report to the full board for payment. And this is a good one this month. Eight million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Incredible spend thrifts. All right, move by Supervisor Rozell, is there a second? Fedler, Hall, Hall, Baker, O'Brien, Hahn, Campbell, Clary, Wang, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. You've got a proclamation in your package, pre-trial probation and parole supervision weeks. Anybody from parole here? Or probation, rather? Okay. If somebody appears, we'll get our picture taken. Other than that, we're supervisors, privileged at the floor. Anyone with privilege? Mr. Hogan. And this, this mic over here, and at five minutes, I call the sergeant in arms, he throws you to the floor. Yeah, okay. That case trap door?
Well, I'd like to thank every-
You'll hear, you'll hear the timer go off over here. And then you start running.
Well, I haven't seen everybody here since January when we were talking about the solid waste management plan. But I went into shock there la- July 10th. I went down to drop off my garbage and recyclables down at the transfer station here in Kingsbury and found the, the chain link fence totally locked, big sign on it saying permanently closed effective June 28th. So initially, I'll be honest, I got mad. Even I, I first hot summer day, garbage in the car, it wasn't working for me. So, but I got to thinking about how that used to operate under the supervision of Washington County. I used to consider it a well-tuned machine. It was, you had staff down there, you could drop your garbage, you could recycle metals, all the different recyclables that were there. You could drop off leaves and brush and everything was taken care of efficiently. Staff were great to work with. So it was, it was good times. However, in 2018, when all the transfer stations were closed, as a result, the, it ended up, those services, services started to diminish. The costs went up, it was very difficult to, the hours were ultimately, just before this closed, it was down to a day and a half of service, all day on Thursday, half a day on a Saturday, which not conducive to public use. Without going into great deal and violating my five minutes, Ace Carding had that. Well, Ace Carding is owned by Waste Connections. It's a company that's nationwide, actually it's more than that. Forty-four states it's in, it's in six Canadian provinces, so it's, it's big business. And apparently, as with most big businesses, that particular transfer station probably wasn't producing the funds that it wanted and needed. So, so that really wasn't in our favor as far as the public is concerned. However, I took my anger from that smelly trash in the car, and I consider that place a golden opportunity for Washington County. The reason I'm thinking this is that in January, there was, the public was here, you had a written part of that, I submitted stuff and many others did as well. In your possession, there's a, actually I was looking for things to talk about, but they've already been written about. I think it was Mrs. Osborne or somebody that did that write-up, put that all together as far as the concerns of the public, what, there was recommendations that, that were hoped to happen, put before the Board of Supervisors. I know it's been bandered around a number of times, I'm not sure what the status of that solid waste management plan is at this point. But the last I knew, there was concerns about it monetarily and so on. But there's, I'm not here to talk about money ask, because I talked to somebody about it and they said that Washington County voter supervisors will ne- they're, they're never gonna be confused or accused, I said the word I want, for not being fiscally responsible. So you, your reputation is well, well-known out there. So, but what I-
Got one minute left.
So, the, the station is, is, was, what brought me here. I feel that that station is a good place for a pilot program that would allow us, or this county, to start a pilot recycling program, composting. I'm not gonna say get into the garbage business again in that respect, but that recycling, composting will reduce the amount of waste that goes into landfills, into the incinerator, and, and, and help the public. Right now, I'm gonna kind of move on a little bit different. The, as many of you know, the Ford, town of Fort Edward and farmers within a lot of Washington County are having trouble with PFOS. PFOS, there is a group called, I'm not gonna say the first-
Finish it up.
Okay. Well, the, this PFOS is being, what I'm gonna recommend to this board, quickly stated, is that there should be a moratorium put on the use of biosolids, which is human waste that's, there's somebody going around here according to this right-to-farm grievance board that says they're making apparently little pellets that are supposedly soil enhancers. They're going to the farmers and saying that this should be used. This, this group that I just mentioned is totally against it. There's been many places, I, when I was here in January, I talked about Maine with deer and turkeys being high levels of PFOS in them. I'm sure in your, your towns, there are a lot of farmers. This, this county is known for it. It's very risky business. This solid waste management plan that you're hoping to get in place has to be put in place so that these PFOS and other chemicals can't be or shouldn't be introduced into this county. Many counties are doing it, they're fighting it.
There, I'm gonna have to cut you off here pretty quick.
All right. Well, here's what I'd like to do. Now, I ask someone, this, the Board of Supervisor develop a, a person within to, for a recycling coordinator. I'd like them to put a moratorium on the introduction of PFOS into this county. I'd like you to just simply talk to some of the people within this community. I also would like to, I didn't give you this piece of paper, but this is a sample copy of a moratorium that other counties have used. Right now Albany County and Schoharri County have six months moratoriums on the introduction of biosolids in farmland. I think it's in our best interest to do it. It's gonna keep people safe. We certainly shouldn't do it if, if you may be kind enough to take and review it.
Leave that with me, I've gotta cut you off, you're gonna make me miss my train.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, if after anybody wants to talk to you, I'd be more happy because I'm gonna stay with you to the end.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, but it's an important issue, please, please look at it. It's not the financial, it's health and safety of your, your constituents. Thank you.
Hey, we don't need any motions still. At rolls, you certainly aren't gonna get to recess today, we can move on to the resolutions.
Resolution number 184 by Supervisors Campbell, Rozell, O'Brien, Clary, Hall, Tall, title to adopt Adirondack Community College Budget.
Moving 184. Move by Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Hahn, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. Mr. Shaw.
I will not be very popular on this, but I cannot support this with the information that our budget officer's been sharing with us on such a large increase that I think we have to look at every avenue and cut wherever we can, and I think 6.7% is too high even though we've committed to a level of funding that we thought we could commit to, and I don't believe we can commit to it now with what we're facing. So I'm gonna be a no vote on this budget.
Roll call, Mr. Hogan. Further discussion? My comment would be, I certainly agree with Dana about the lack of the state stepping up to the plate, as they should. I think we've, we've stepped up the plate pretty well for a number of years and, and supported it, but I, I do feel we're supporting our, our communities. I think this is, you know, I consider the college to be a tremendous asset for, for our county, and I would be hard pressed to, even in the face of that, to be a no vote. Anyone else? Mr. Nolan.
I too, I'm very supportive of this. As the Chair has stated, Adirondack Community College is a great asset for this county and this region. We have a place where our young people can go and learn skills and education that will enable them to be productive citizens in this county, and that's a very big positive. In addition, there are many things that happen at the college that affect the surrounding community, and those kinds of things are making Washington County, I think, a better place to live.
Clary.
I'll be in support of this because it works with local businesses, which help them to get the workforce that they need. Also, you look at the, you know, everything that Bob and Jim have said. Our veterans are getting support at the, at Adirondack through peer-to-peer. They offer community services that help everyone have, have a better chance to, to improve themselves and educate themselves. So I'll be a yes, and I thank them for that.
Okay, this is a roll call.
Your hinky.
Yes.
Mrs. Fedler. Mr. Tall.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Oh.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Hahn.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Skelly. Mr. Hogan. Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Clary.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell. The resolution is adopted, 2,798 yes, 1,410 no, 482 absent. Resolution number 185 by Supervisors Nolan, Shaw, O'Brien, Hall, Tall, title authorizing out-of-state travel for cybersecurity officer.
Mr. Chairman, I move resolution number 185.
Supervisor Nolan, second. Hall, Fedler, Tall, Shaw, Hall, O'Brien, Hahn, Rozell. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Just a note, our new president had to walk out immediately after that vote because they have to run up to Warren County and get there in time, they're doing this thing at the same time, so it's, not that they waited for their vote and ran out the door, they just have to. Huh? But it's always the same. Yeah. Well, it always works the same way, they gotta go to Warren County's meeting at the same- Yeah, the meetings are the same time.
I was disappointed to see that because I would have liked to make a comment, even though I voted yes, I 100% agree and she should have got the message that we're not happy with the increase, but, yeah. But there's a lot of advantages for the U.
All right, we're on to the next resolution.
Resolution number 186 by Supervisors O'Brien, Shaw, Hall, Nolan, Wang, title to approve the Washington County overnight travel policy.
Mr. Chairman, moving 187.
Supervisor Shaw, second. Fedler. Hall. What?
Didn't I say 186?
Oh, I thought it was overnight travel, he said. I looked at it wrong.
186. I'll hold it for you, you don't need it. All right, move by Supervisor O'Brien, second. Beck. Hall, Hall. Clary, Wang, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 187 by Supervisor Shaw, Clary, Baker, Wang, title to approve amendment of Lake Champlain-Lake George Regional Planning Board bylaws.
Do I need to move this again?
Yes.
Shaw move.
Supervisor Shaw, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, Baker, Clary, Wang, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 188 by Supervisor Skelly, Wilson, Nolan, Baker, Hahn, title accept crime victims grant, district attorney.
Supervisor Skelly, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, Baker, O'Brien, Hahn, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 189 by Supervisors Wilson, Skelly, O'Brien, Clary, Rozell, Fisher, Baker, Wang, title authorizing the implementation and funding of the cost of a transportation project which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds.
Chairman, moving resolution 189.
Supervisor Wilson, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, Baker, O'Brien, Clary, Wang, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 190 by Supervisors Hall, Campbell, O'Brien, Skelly, Tall, title amend staffing pattern, youth bureau, alternative sentencing.
Chairman, moving resolution number 190.
Supervisor Hall, second. Fedler, Tall, O'Brien, Hahn, and Nolan. Discussion. Mr. Shaw.
Am I reading this correct on the budget impact that replaces the grade 15 position with the grade 13? And so that's cost-saving, correct? I'm 100% behind it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 191 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall, title to close capital project number 82 fire training center.
Moving 181. Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Hahn, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 192 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall, title to close capital project number 81, County Route 10 bridge over the Poltony River.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Hahn, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 193 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall, title to close capital project number 118, bridge preservation projects.
Moving 193. Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Hahn, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution number 194 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall, title to close capital project number- Title, to close capital project number 124, sewer district number two, FE 1A.
Moving 194.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Han, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 195 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, to close capital project number 127, Church Street Bridge number two.
Finally, moving 195.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Han, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. I think Brian's comment is exactly right. They were talking about the Church Street Bridge, our very first meeting. Now we're finally closing it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 196 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, amend budget, county attorney for tax foreclosure litigation.
Moving resolution 196.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Han, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 197 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, amend budget DSS for security detention and transportation requirements.
Moving 197.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. This is an unfunded state mandate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Wait a minute. Here, nay. Yep.
Listen, no. Resolution number 198 by
Closer.
Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, amend 2025 budget for new cost reporting, Department of Social Services.
Moving 198.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien. I think Baker was just scratching. Clary, Nolan. Like an oxen, watch yourself. Comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 199 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, amend budget, Department of Social Services for pilot review of DSS operations.
Moving resolution 199.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 200 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, authorize the chairman of the board to sign amendment to the 2024 through 2029 Municipal Snow and Ice Agreement for 2024-25 season and amend budget.
Moving 200.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Han, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 201 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, to create capital project number 141, sewer district number two, process, control, and administration building project.
Moving 201.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 202 by Supervisors Campbell, O'Brien, Shaw, Skelly, Hogan, Clary, Hall, Tall. Title, amend the title by grade schedule and staffing pattern, real property for real property tax clerk.
Moving 202.
Supervisor Campbell, second. Fedler, Tall, Hall, O'Brien, Clary, and Nolan. Discussion. This is a roll call.
Your hanky.
Yes.
Mrs. Fedler.
Yes.
Mr. Tall.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Han.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Skelly.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan. Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Clary.
Yes.
Mr. Wang. Mr. Rozell. The resolution is adopted, 3,686 yes, 522 no, 482 absent.
Hey, thank you for your expedience, the supervisor's comments. Mr. Campbell.
I got a couple of things. First of all, I won't be here for next month's board meeting, so I'm going to be a little premature on the budgets deal I have in a second. First of all, on the college vote, I understand everyone's concern and where that's going. I also understand we've done all the research in the past. We even looked at not even being a sponsor, and we are well aware now that would cost us a lot more money because then we would just pay the chargebacks at whatever rate Warren County would actually put in. So we would probably be out more money. We came to this plan, I'm going to say this is the second year of it. So three years ago, I think we devised it, and I think this is the second year it's been in place. And over time, it's to get us up to the one-third, which is supposedly required by law, even though the state figures there's a different way than they used to to, so they don't have to pay. I don't like that, but I don't know that it's fair to us to beat on the department that actually does help our local taxpayers able to send their kids to college at a more reasonable price than they can in a lot of other situations. But I know everyone has their own opinion on that, and we just have to work around that. But if we want to have a bigger discussion on that, that should probably go back to committee going forward. But there's still like seven years of increases left at about that rate, I believe, if I remember right. So the 26 budget. I've, it seems like I haven't ever got done with the 25 budget because it started right over. I've always said 20% because that represents a $7.5 million increase. And so I'm going to break that down, real simplicity here. $3.5 million is what we have to not use in fund balance. That's what we used in fund balance last year. The whole idea was, we didn't expect any departments to actually lose us fund balance. We had one that did. They lost us the $3.5 million, the same amount that we put in as fund balance. We would have come out rosy, instead we lost that $3.5 million. Can't do much about that at this point. So if you reinstate that by not taking it out again, there's only $4 million left. And that sounds big because normally we are around a million dollars that we add. The problem with that is, is you probably have a half a million that comes in for just software maintenance updates, ones that we put in last year that the maintenance was included, that are going to add on now. There's probably half a million right there. There's probably a million just in assigned council. There's a million and a half. There's probably another million just in all the wages between all of your contracts. You've got three contracts up and other things. Health insurance is unknown. Retirement could be another million. Because we were shocked that retirement was above what we budgeted for this year right now in the estimate. We don't, I mean, it's possible it can make it within budget, but it's like over $100,000 right now. And sales tax is an unknown. We're only $400,000 over halfway in, so we might still reach budget, but we might not reach last year's number. We, there's just too many unknowns at this point. So that's kind of where we're at. But I try to not shellac every department for what they didn't do because what you're going to do to the taxpayer, if you want to get this thing down to the 2% tax cap, you either have to cut roads entirely, highway, or the highway patrol entirely, and all you're doing is hurting the working person. You're hurting the person that's paying the taxes. And I don't think that's where we want to make cuts. I don't like shellac, it's bad enough we got to shellac the taxpayer with a huge tax increase. It's another way, it's another bad job to take away the services that they require. They do need police protection, they do need roads to get to work. So to me, I think we really are going to keep DSS under the spectacle. We're going to try to crack down on that. I think if we hear of a reconciliation of a huge number, which is coming right up in the next three weeks or two weeks, I think we'll address that at our August 4 finance meeting. That's the way I'd do it. But that's all up to you guys. I just want you to know that that's the big picture in a very simplistic form, and this is before anybody asks for anything in the budget. So I don't know if we can get under 20%. It's damn close right today without having the absolute numbers. Nolan, Mr. Rozell, I'm sorry. Right now, this year's budget is $141 million. It's $151 minus you take out the interfund transfers, so it's $141. 84.
I did figure you got an average $700,000 home.
Yeah, but that's a little. 84. Okay, so I like the way you look at the numbers. I see those numbers too. Stacy shares them with me all the time. And you got to remember that this, those numbers monthly that come through audit, they're not our regular operational numbers. We have three projects going on. And those numbers are all the money that's building these two highway barns and redoing and going. So I got to believe that once those are taken out, next year you'll see that subside back to the $5, $6 million per month. Because they didn't, they only went over $5 million when we started the buildings. So, because I've got the sheet on my desk.
Simple picture of it is, we're spending this much, and this is what we got in the budget.
Yeah.
Whichever way you want to explain it, that's what it is.
Oh, right. So you're seeing the money going out the door in different ways. You're actually mixing reports, and so it's kind of tough to explain all that. But yeah, there's 37.9 in this budget raised by taxes, which is 58.5% of that number. And the last year's $37 million went to DSS, never should have happened. But even in this year's budget, they're at 51%. So my concern is it goes to 60%. I don't know that half of our money raised by taxes should be going to that department. But I'm not sure we can do much about that because we don't know what's mandated and what's not mandated. I'm to the point where I'm willing to cut everything that's not mandated. That's where I'm at.
I think we've been talking about this all year, and I think we need to take some action. And I would suggest that we ask each department head at the beginning of the budget process to submit a budget that's 5% less than this year's budget.
Sounds good, but how many people are we willing to cut to do that? Because that's the only way you're going to do it, is cutting people.
Well, we've been talking about it and talking about it. If we're not going to do anything about it, stop talking about it.
O'Brien.
Education. I think we look at the impact on the county over the past year with the loss of Great Meadow and the loss we'll have. We don't know what the loss is going to be. But we need to look at, how do we encourage our students to get an education and to stay in Washington County? Because if you don't have people to work, we're just becoming an aging county. And any investment in education is going to help us educate kids to come and take the jobs, or hopefully new companies are going to come in, or companies want to expand. But there is an opportunity here to look at where the expansion is going to come from. But we need to seriously look at how we do economic development and how we encourage people to come here. And one of the vehicles is through tourism. Is that a lot of tourists? And I won't say a lot, there are a lot of businesses that have ended up in Washington County because they came up or visited, fell in love with it, and moved their companies up here. So I just think education is so important, and our investment education is going to provide us a return. Second thing is that Hampton had the loss of a 14-year-old Amish person who was in the news. And you know, it was, there was a lot to it, but you know, just so emotional to the entire community to lose someone 14-years-old, and his young brother and sisters watching him go. Done.
We have our Alfresco dinner Saturday night, which is always like fundraising all year round, but that is, that's for operating and keeping the lights and heat on. So it's always a lot of fun. And also, we had Peg Culver passed away from our town. She worked in the Salem library for 43 years. She welcomed everybody with a smile. She got books for them on my lap because my husband never had to pick out a book in his life because they read the same things. So she always had a book ready for him. I think that she treated a lot of people in Salem that way. She encouraged them, she brought them in the library, and she got them to read and read and read. And how wonderful is that? So we'll miss her.
How much time have you got left? No, I don't want to make you late.
We're doing fine.
I, I don't have many months left to share my thoughts, and I tend to be a lightning rod when I do share my thoughts. So I try not to say too much, but after listening to everybody, I feel like I have to say this. I understand and agree with what everybody's saying. But somewhere along the line, you have a responsibility to draw the line on what is absolutely necessary and what is fair. And I was thinking, Brian, when you said you don't want to punish the working man by not providing good transportation, roads, and whatnot. But how about the old people in their homes who aren't working? Because we're taxing land. We're not taxing job income, we're taxing land. And you've got just as many people you're going to impact that way in a negative way. And then you take education, and education is sacred. I totally agree with what you're saying, Jim. It makes for a better place and a better community with good education. But for, in the workforce of your basic labor workforce, for every five people that retire, whether they're electricians, plumbers, whatever, there's only one coming back in. I mean, if you're thinking about education, you ought to be thinking maybe towards the trades and not college because there's a lot of kids coming out of college with no jobs and no prospect of jobs. So you got to find a balance in all this, and you can't say one is more important than the other. But somehow we got to sort through this and see that one is just as important as the other. And that's why I'm trying to hold the line, and I totally agree with Jim. Either say everybody's got to cut 5% or quit talking about it. Because we're just moving forward closer and closer, and we're going to hit that 20% increase because all we've done to talk about it, nobody wants to make any serious decisions on how to cut costs. So I'm glad you said that, Jim, and I'm hoping we're either going to cut costs or quit talking about it. Thank you, Mr. Hinky.
I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman.
Fine, we're doing fine.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Shaw's statement. I too was not very fond of this, this race for the college. But in my opinion, education for our young people that New York State is not supporting, then we need to. You know, New York State shoves a lot of stuff down our throats, but if we can help young people get an education, then then I think that that should be on, one of the things on the top of our list. And Adirondack does offer some trade classes. Thank you.
I'm going to just clarify on what Scott was referring to. So that's where the community college has really changed. It's gone back to being an actual community college, so to speak, but you can actually get a four degree if you go through the, the stuff with Plattsburgh. But actually they have aligned with a lot of our local businesses now. And so the trade school requires a lot of computer training because a lot of the trade schools now use computers to do the work. So they're kind of tied together. The trade schools don't work without computer training. So to, you can't get one of them to, and they don't want to invest twice. So they let the trade school invest in one side, the college invest on the other side, and they put the two together to hopefully get a better outcome with a student that can go right to work. That's what they've tried to do. That's been the whole press, I'd say for probably the last six years. And so that's how we got to this point. So whether it works or not, that remains to be seen, but that's what they're doing.
Oh, I think if we look at Bosse's moving to Wilton and expansion, I encourage the, I encourage the expansion of the services because we look at their waiting lists, they're not servicing the people, all the people they can. So that will increase exposure for education for trades. So I think that we'd also like to see more alignment between ACC to the Sudi on Adirondack and Bosse's.
Just a quick response. And this is, I'm going to give you a personal example. My grandson went to Bosse's, graduated eighteen, three years in Bosse's, took HVAC. He's now twenty, just turned twenty-one. So it's been three years. He's up to almost thirty dollars an hour working in, on air conditioning. All I'm, and with no college debt. I'm saying there's other answers and I'm not trying to tear down what we're doing. I'm just saying we're responsible for the taxpayers, land taxpayers of Washington County. And so just like that gentleman that spoke about the transfer station, recycling, how important it is. It is. There's no question about it. It's for our environment, it is. But what can we afford? And when it's not as popular a discussion, and we probably won't spend any money on it. I won't support it because it's taking money away from the taxpayers and it has to come from the private sector. So I'm just looking at this with no emotion. I'm as cold as a cold fish when it comes to taxing people. And I'm just saying, you got to look at all this, there's no sacred cows in this budget coming up. And when you got to do what you got to do. And I'm not trying to take away, I know you're defending the college. This is not what it's about. It's about taxing the people. Thank you. I will say no more.
If we don't support our young people, then there won't be any landowners left around to pay the taxes. We're an aging community. One of our goals is to keep young people here. And if we don't support our, our local college, they're going to start their lives somewhere else. Some of them are going to anyways, but this might be an avenue to keep more, more of our young people in our area. That's what I just said.
What can do with them?
That's what I just said.
Okay. You may recall several years ago, several, several years ago now, I was adamant about doing a letter to our taxpayers, telling them where we're spending our money. I thought that was pretty critical. We, it got transmogrified and a little bit more complex. I think it's too complex for some of them to read now, but I think the bottom line is if you, if you you know, get through all the stuff that Kevin Hayes interjected into the thing, about eighty percent of our budget, we got nothing, we can't do a thing about. That's what's wrong. These are our mandates that we're always talking about are mostly things that were never intended to be paid with property taxes. They should not be paid with property taxes. We shouldn't be taxing a few people to pay for everything else. They should be, you know, income tax or some other state tax running these things. We've got to keep on that. We can't possibly solve the budget, there's no way, and I, I would never run for budget officer. There's no way a budget officer can do a budget when he can't control eighty percent of it. And you guys did some good stuff here, not, you know, voting to not play with a bigger one than I thought you were going to the last time, but we still voted to not do it, a mandate, see what happens. But we've got to do something about the mandates. That's, and I keep harping on it. Harping on it when we go to Albany and it's, you know, talking to our representatives is kind of, you know, they're, they're certainly supportive, but they're in a minority, so it's, it's more difficult. But if we don't handle the mandates, we're never going to handle the taxes. It's just going to keep going up and up and up and up and up. Secondly, teach your kids to swim. We got good swim programs. We've had a fatality and a couple of really close ones here just lately. There's, was the, the great programs our youth bureau is doing and stuff, there's no reason for a kid not to be able to swim at age fourteen. You teach your kids to swim. Closing the transfer stations. I'd just like to point out that there was one, it might have been two people that voted against closing the transfer stations. And he said exactly what was going to happen, that they were going to go on it for a few years, then close to try and establish the, the fact that there's, you know, going to be one carding system, carding company that handles all refuse in New York State. It's where they're trying to head, they're trying to head for a complete monopoly and we helped them out. Could we afford it to pay for it? You know, with, you know, we're thinking this way, probably not. It would have been expensive process, but it is progressing exactly like I said it was going to. And on a happier note, there is the poll for a cure going on this weekend. Big tractor poll, the proceeds all go to cancer. It's the Lufkin family in honor of Carl, who was a supervisor here, he might have been chairman of the board even, I can't remember. He was a longtime supervisor in town of Aragau. So it's a good time, a lot of vendor trucks, good stuff to eat. Everything from the kids' classes to the unlimited, so I won't see it this year, but feel free to come over and visit Sina Cargill and go to the pool. Well done. All right, he was first.
And I'm going to have to try to attend college, or I should have attended college when I was younger, so I can understand the big words that Bob uses.
Thank you, you stole my
This is why you'll never get me to speak in favor of trade school versus a liberal education. Everybody should have, have your liberal arts requirements and then go to trade school. It's very important to have both. Was that it? You just wanted, you just wanted to hang me? Okay. Mrs. Clary.
As we're going through the budget, we keep hearing about the mandates. Is there any way we can identify in the budget, what is a mandate and what isn't a mandate? So we have a list of what those are?
If department heads worked with us, it would be great.
I think, I think it's really important for us to identify what we're talking about.
Put a lot of them on, put a lot of them on that taxpayer letter that goes out with the taxes every year. And it's pretty easy to figure that out.
Anything you really want for your community is not mandated. That's what you get to cut. No, it's true. You can cut your roads and highway patrol, that's
That's all, that's almost true, things that, that we think government should be doing.
Put it on paper so that we can know, know what it is.
I couldn't put it on list of favor because I can't get an answer out of DSS to go to hell. That's the truth of the matter.
Mr. Nolan.
It's a, it's a fallacy that when we talk about over eighty percent of the budget is mandated, that there's nothing we can do about it. Yes, it's mandated, but it doesn't mean we can't deliver it efficiently. And so I don't think we should ignore that eighty percent and say, oh, we got to get all the savings added to twenty percent.
Us people is how you do that.
Yes. Going once, going twice.
I order the chairman of the Washington County Board of Supervisors, Robert Henke. I declare this meeting adjourned and stand adjourned until August fifteenth at ten AM when it shall reconvene. Well, whatever. I had to add, we talked about this eighty, twenty, eighty no control, twenty control. Talk to the two farmers. Ask what farming is. It's eighty percent uncontrolled, twenty percent controlled. Same difference, and they make it.